Call to order, Brainerd City Council. It is Monday, July 7th, 2025, 7:30 PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
President.
Stunek, Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson, Bevins?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we're looking for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I have an amendment to the minutes. I know it's under consent, but I thought I'd do it now to take the Lions Club issue to include the original motion and then the amended motion. Right now, it essentially lists the amended motion. And then I would like to also add an item to the agenda under unfinished business, I think it would be, for data from Crow Wing County.
Unfinished business or new business? Which one?
Whatever you prefer. It would be old business or unfinished, I guess.
We've already visited that item before, so let's put it under unfinished business. We'll make that E9F. All right, airport levy, or which one? Which part of the airport discussion is this?
No, the Crow Wing County for data for the shelter.
Oh, okay, Crow Wing County, gotcha. All right.
Move to approve as amended, Bevins.
Second, Johnson.
Motion by Bevins, seconded by Johnson. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, same sign. We have an agenda. Next, we have a consent calendar. This is a notice of public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to approve, Bevins.
Second, Johnson.
Motion by Bevins, seconded by Johnson. Any discussion? Tony?
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. All right, moving on, number six, we have public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. We'll try to keep it under a few minutes. I don't know if there's anybody here to speak at public forum, but if you are here for that, please come forward. Dolly?
Hi there, Dolly Madden, 1730 Graydon Avenue in Brainerd, Minnesota. And I'm actually here on behalf of the Realtors Association. Some of you participated a couple of summers ago in a housing study that we did called Transforming Neighborhoods, and I appreciate your time and efforts. What we're trying to do now, now that Nick is here, he's got his feet wet, he's been in the run-in for a while, we are creating a housing summit on August 6th, and this is at personal invitation, so I'm going to all of the city councils in Crow Wing County to invite the city councils, the commissions, EDA members, realtors, lenders, and contractors, and others who play a role in housing. We're just, it's a high-level discussion about identifying barriers and brainstorming solutions that could better meet the needs of our residents. And so I would like for you to save your date on your calendar of August 6th, it's a Wednesday, from 8:30 AM till 12:00. And we've got some wonderful speakers. I think that will shed some, actually some great ideas and some just thought-provoking discussions, and that is my purpose of my invitation for you tonight. Thank you.
Where was that, Dolly?
I'm sorry, it's at the Greater Lakes Association Realtors Office.
Okay.
And we're over just north of Menards. And again, I'll send the invitation so you have all of the details, okay?
You'll send an email to Nick or somebody?
I will send it to, yep, City Hall. I have all your emails, so I can also send you directly.
Quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is a heavy appetizer?
There is no heavy appetizer. It's morning, so it'll be donuts or fruit. What's your preference? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online that wants to address the council? Please press star three if you're online and you want to speak. Do we have one there, Max? Or no?
Maybe somebody's busy getting a heavy appetizer.
Maybe. I'll ask one more time if there's anybody in here that wants to come up. Looks like no. And we will close public forum at 7:34. Next, moving on to number seven, presentations. We have our 2024 audit presentation. Come on up. Moment we've all been waiting for since last year.
Sure.
Uh-huh.
This is as good as a sewer video.
Yeah, well, it's even better.
Perfect. Thank you for having me tonight. Obviously wrapped up the audits, bound document, fairly large. Should have received all of that prior to the meeting. So we'll go over the PowerPoint like we usually do. Feel free to stop me at any time if there are any questions. So the agenda items here, we'll go over the required communication, the audit results, financial results, and then just a few other discussion insights and observations that came from the audit. So our required communications, as I have done in the past, our primary responsibility as auditors is write an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented. We do review internal accounting controls. Obviously, you want controls in place, and we want to make sure that they are working. Risk-based audit approach, we don't test every transaction. We do some detail-level transaction testing, then we do some higher comparisons, current year to prior year, current year to budget. If anything looks out of the ordinary, we do additional testing on those areas. We do test in detail the federal awards. You did expend over $750,000, so we do test a program there. Significant accounting policies, those are going to be outlined in Note 1. Your new standard for this year, because there's got to be one every year, GASB 101, compensated absences. So it just changes the way that we looked at the comp abs and then the way that management now has to assess those. So that has been flowed through the financial statements for this year. So within the bound document, there are management judgments and accounting estimates. All of those are reasonable and supported. Corrected and uncorrected. So your uncorrected, beginning net position was understated by about $492,000 for governmental activities, $16,000 for airport. Both of those related to GASB 101. So those are shored up, and going forward, you won't have that uncorrected adjustment there.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, can I ask you a question specifically about that? I had a conversation with Connie. She did explain to me that, and I hope I'm saying this right, Connie, but because of those amounts, it wasn't, I apologize, Connie, I got this wrong, it wasn't significant enough to go back in and find where those differences are found.
We knew where the differences were. It just wasn't material enough to restate beginning balances.
But that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, when does it become material enough to restate? That's where I got the...
So at any point, once it gets up above a planning materiality, which we calculate every year based on revenues, some assets, things like that, it changes from year to year depending on the activity within the city. Management can make that judgment call all the way up to planning materiality. Then at planning materiality, it kicks over to where it has to be restated. So anything lower than that, management can either decide to restate or pass, like we did this year.
Okay.
So, but it does change from year to year.
Appreciate it.
Perfect. So we'll keep going, page five. No disagreements with management's there. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Everything was ready when we came on site. Page six, audits of group financial statements. Remember, we do include the airport, library, HRA, and then the BPU is now a fund of the city, but those are all considered group audits. Page seven, here, so overall city audit results, unmodified, so clean, our highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. One significant deficiency new from the past, segregation duties. We came in and just had a few things that didn't have that final review at the end. So just a significant deficiency, which is lower than a material weakness. Doesn't affect anything for federal awards or anything like that. We've discussed with Connie. She's going to try and put a better process in place. Some of those things you just don't think about as you're prepping for the audit and getting things ready. So then we also tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds because that was significant money spent this year. And one significant deficiency there as well, lack of the final review over annual reports. So again, Connie will work on having that second review as that in place as well. We did tests, so Leo compliance, about seven areas there. No findings noted. So then Connie will come up for the next part.
Okay, so if we look at our general fund balance, our financial results, the fund balance is approximately $4.3 million, of which approximately $3.4 million is unassigned and can be used for operations. The 2024 operation expenditures were $14.5 billion. So we're at 23% of our unassigned fund balance to 2024 operating expenditures. And this does not meet our goal or policy, which is 35% to 50%, as recommended by the state auditor's office. The next slide. Here we have a comparison of the general fund's revenues to what was budgeted. We'll look at the actual budget a little bit closer and a difference, but the big differences are our license and permits. We're under budgeted by $75,000. This was building permits primarily. We budgeted $230,000, and our actual was $156,000. Internal government, we're over budgeted by $1.5 million, but when you remove the recognition of the ARPA funds of $1.3 million, we're over budgeted by $241,000. And $41,000 was a pass-through. So we had some one-time revenue there as well for grants and aids. Interest, there's a difference of $254,000. When you remove the adjustment for investments to fair market value of $160,000, the actual difference is about $94,000. If we go to the next slide, which is the comparison, the general fund balances expenditures to budget, the biggest difference is, is general government, we're under budget by $133,000. We didn't replace the assistant planning position as well as turnover in a couple other departments, so we had some savings in personnel. Public works was under budget by $119,000. The biggest issue, or the biggest reason, is we didn't have snow removal, as we didn't use all of the budget in 2024. So if we look at the next slide, this is what the audit shows, is that we were budgeting for expenditures to exceed revenues by $47,000. Actual, as the audit shows, that the revenues exceeded expenditures by $437,000. So we have a difference of $484,000. But when we take in some audit adjustments, so if we go to the next slide, if, there are things that we report that we don't budget for. For example, we have to, for audit, we have to report funds 217 and 895 are part of the general fund, and the fair market value adjustment of $160,000. We won't realize that as we will hold our investments to maturity. And in 2023, if you recall, I missed the transfer to the fire capital. So if we take out those things that affect the bottom line, we're actually, we're revenues exceed expenditures by $419,229. And again, the biggest difference is, is that was intergovernmental revenues. We had police aid, fire aid is pass-through, and interest income. And we had savings and personnel cost. And we had less snow removal costs, and overall budget savings in fuel and repairs and maintenance budget in line items. If we go to the next slide, this shows, this is just, again, stresses the fund balance, and municipalities are looking for that 35 to 50 days because we don't get our taxes and LGA until July. So basically, we use all of our cash on hand, plus any cash that we have received in the first six months of operations. If we go to the next slide, we have total revenues. There's really not a whole lot of changes in the bar graphs from '23 to '24, or really from overall '20 to '24. You know, we have investment earnings, and then, of course, we paid the, well, this is the intergovernmental. Intergovernmental revenue can depend on what projects we're doing and how much funding we get for those projects as well. The next slide, we're looking at total expenditures. We see the biggest fluctuation in our public works. Again, we didn't have as much snowfall in 2024. And in the principal, the reason it's so much higher in '21 and '22 was how we reported the utility at that point. We go to the next slide, we have debt service. We will keep to work on reducing the discrepancy each year. I will say, though, that we had a lot of prepaid assessments when we issued our 2024A bond, and we don't have a February 1st debt payment. So our debt payment would be normally higher next year because they actually had principal and interest payment. We'll just keep working on that to get it more in line.
What's the number there, Connie?
You know, we have, it's just showing that we have about twice as much cash as what we have for our February 1st payment.
Twice as much as we need.
Need to make our February 1st payment, yes. Yes.
And there's no number?
It, there's, it's less than $1 million that we paid February 1st, and we have just under $2 million in cash. So we're about a million, so twice as much cash on hand than what we had to pay February 1st for debt payments.
Thank you.
And again, it's hard to adjust because when we get those prepayments, we don't want to take it all in year one, so we try to take it over the life of the bond. But we seem to be missing, or I seem to be missing, that calculation yet, so we continue to work on that as we go forward. The next one is the city's total debt. This shows our debt broken out by purpose. Again, we just see the special assessment revenue bonds. We issued special revenue bonds again in 2024. We're seeing pretty much everything else kind of going downward slide, which is a good thing in my mind. And then the final slide talks about the enterprise funds. So we have three enterprise funds. Those are our types of funds that we run as a business, so they have a different reporting methodology than our regular funds. All of them had a positive net change in fund balance. However, this does not reflect any infrastructure improvements. So if you look at, for example, the storm sewer fund, we had a positive net change of $102,000. However, we paid over $500,000 in capital expenditures that are not reflected on this statement because of how it's reported. So you would want to look at the cash flow statement to really see how we are cash flowing and how it is operating.
And remind me again, what are the other two capital, or enterprise?
Enterprise funds. We have the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, and the Brainerd Public Utilities.
Thank you.
All right, I'll turn back to Mary.
Okay. Perfect. Just a few more slides to go through. So overall, just insert insights and observations here. We talked about just the one finding on single audit, hopefully we'll correct going forward. State reporting form and GFWA certificate was submitted to me.
Can I just comment on this significant finding? So we came to the council in December, and we said, this is how we spent our ARPA funds. Yep, we rearranged it, so we spent all of it. I filed the report online. No one reviewed that final report, and that's what resulted in the finding. I'm not sure how I could change that because you have to file it online. I will have to print it out before I hit submit and have somebody review it. It's all I'm going to correct it going forward.
Who would normally review that?
Could be another coning staff, or Nick could even review it, just saying, yes, this is what we agreed to.
Do we have a list of things that would need to be a final review like that going forward?
Yes. We kept track of everything that we found that didn't have that second review and have provided it to Connie.
Okay.
And that's why we got the segregation of duty findings. For example, I prepared the AR sheet. Normally, it's a joint effort between myself and accounts payable. It just, we ran out of time. I prepared it. We didn't review it. For example, when we submitted the Small Cities Development First Pay App, Pam reviewed it all before we actually submitted it. So that's how we're getting rid of the comments. So just thought I would share that with you all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just eliminates human error. That's what we need to look for in that control process. So fund balance reserves, we talked about general fund. Fund balance policy is to have the 35% to 50% of general fund. Right now, you are at 23% there. So just continue to monitor that. A few of the other funds that we didn't talk about revolving loan fund did have positive change in fund balance, so you received about $43,000 in those loan payments coming back, and then no large loans out this year. Debt service fund had restricted fund balance of about $1.96 million there with expenditures of $932,000. Connie hit on it, collection of special assessments, just not sure when to time those. And those are slated when they do the levy, is to collect those every year, right? So normally, you assess those and you collect them over the certain years. So right now, you'll just hold on to those and make those payments as they come due. Capital Projects Funds has assigned fund balance of about $4.3 million with expenditures of $4.7 this year. Approximately $2.2 million comes in from transfers in from other funds and taxes, and then some of those intergovernmental grants that you apply for for those projects. And then you did issue $1.7 million of your special assessment improvement bonds, which were spent on capital outlay this year. So that was a brief overview. I didn't know if there were any follow-up questions.
Anybody have questions? Doesn't look like it.
Okay, perfect.
If that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are looking for a motion from the council to accept the audit results as presented.
So move.
Motion by Chesak. We have a second.
Second, Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Excellent. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, guys. Moving on, next we have council committee reports. First up, we have Safety and Public Works Committee. Tonight, we have Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Jaeger, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, O'Day, and fellow aldermen. As a point of note, there were only two members present, so all motions were carried unanimously. We have six items, and we'll start off with number one here. This was the approval of the final pay request for the Laurel Street Bridge Repair Project. Recommendation coming out of committee was to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Chesak. Jaeger?
Yeah, this is, this $744.85 is not technically any, an additional item. The project technically came in actually under budget, so this is just the final retainage while we were waiting for our, the final turf to take place or to reestablish for the spring.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Against, same sign. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item number two was the approval of the final pay request for the historic water tower rehabilitation project. This is the phase two portion of this. This is, our committee talked through this a little bit. Our recommendation was to approve this, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Chesak. Discussion, Jaeger?
Yeah, just real quickly, this is a semi-final pay request for the historic water tower. If you'll remember, we had some parts of this that were pulled away, pulled out of this project. The stairs, I believe, were one of those. So this is the $43,335 plus the $12,590. The total project, remember, is $251. That's all.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Just as a point of discussion for that, this came up, over the weekend, people were asking, how much more is left on the water tower? I know it's, it's the stucco and the stairs on the inside, or are the stairs done?
Um, sure.
Yeah, I could jump into water tower?
Yeah, Mr. Water Tower, thank you. I appreciate it. So yeah, the stairs are not done. The stucco is the main concern, is as you can continue to look at it, there's been enough weathering behind it in that it is spiring and spidering, excuse me, and some chunks are beginning to fall from it. Just keeping an eye on that, making sure that it's safe is the big issue. That is also the large cost. Estimates are wildly inaccurate at this point for what the cost will be for that. The stairs, from a personal perspective, I'm not even concerned about the stairs. The only people that use the stairs are us as the city, and last time I was on there, they were rickety, but, but as is things in a hundred-year-old water tower. So the main concern is the actual stucco itself, and then the stairs. Now that we've sealed up the water tower, should be pretty secure for at least the near future.
Phase three is the final phase, right?
May I ask a question of the mayor?
You can.
I understand rickety, but when you talk about iron that's rusting, is it unsafe? Is it, is it deteriorating to a point where somebody's going to break and is going to... Ricketty's one thing.
That might be a better question for the engineer.
Yeah, I would say probably a better question for the engineer. I don't believe so. I don't think we've ever heard from anybody that the stairs are unsafe, and what was planned to do with them is sandblast them, recoat them, just to seal them up.
Are you a rickety expert, Jesse?
No, sir. The general scope was to sandblast and repaint. That was more of a preservation treatment. There were a couple spots where they were going to do some, like, patching-type repairs for some areas where there was some section loss, but there was no recommendation that the stairs were unsafe.
One mayor's rickety is another mayor's beautiful and 100% accurately complete stairs.
All right. What were we talking about again?
I have no idea.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have any more discussion? Seeing none from the other side of the room. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Jaeger?
Very good, thank you. Item number three, this is probably our most robust item here, so if there's any questions on this, I may forward this off to, off to Mr. Habegorst, who's been, and Mr. Dean, who's been working on this. But this, item number three is the recommendation of the approval of change order number one. This is for our improvement with the Wright Street 10th reconstruction project. Basically, what this is, and motion coming out of committee was to approve and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Chesak. Discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Essentially, what we've realized as this project has kind of gotten underway is that we were kind of missing some signage. We had some people kind of ducking and weaving and bobbing and making some moves that we really wanted to control. So this item for $3,200 roughly is to help bolster up our signage there and kind of keep people where they're supposed to be.
Okay. Very good. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Passes.
Very good. Item number four is the, the approval for the plans to authorize the advertisement for the M Street out, this is our outfall repair project. If you'll remember, this is up by the BIC project. Recommendation coming out of committee was to approve the plans authoring the advertisement for the bids of the M Street project, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Chesak. More discussion, Jaeger?
Just real briefly, you may remember, this came before us some time ago. This is the, the repair project for the, for the water deterioration that was happening up there. It's my understanding that Mr. Higgins has been, you know, a part of these conversations, has seen the plans and supports the project. That's all.
Thank you. More discussion?
Mr. President, I think it's $169,000, was it?
I believe it's $169,420.
Aye.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Jaeger?
All right. Number five here was, I'm going to get to it, is our, the approval for this, this is the approval for sanitary sewer lateral locating service. This is a service that we cannot self-perform. The recommendation coming out of committee was to approve the proposal from GPRS for the sewer locating in the amount of $12,105, and I so move.
Second.
By Jaeger, second by Chesak. Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, real briefly, we have our project coming up, and it should be noted that this is in 2026, not 2025. Thank you, Mr. Chesak, for pointing that out. Basically, what this is, is this is a service that we cannot self-perform. We don't have the equipment to do this. This would allow us to hire a company to come in and, ahead of the project, take a look at the risers that are extending true due north, which we cannot see with our cameras. So this is a specialized service that would allow us to get that on, get the, get that information onto the plans so that we're not doing exploratory digging when we enter this project. So it's a, it's, it's an amount of money that we would spend to save money in the exploration phase, so to speak, of this project.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Jaeger?
Very good, thank you. This is our final, this is our final item here. We did not take action on this. We felt in special committee that the entire council should weigh in on this. Effectively, what this is, is a question. Staff is asking what, what we should do with the flags on the top of the historic water tower. Staff is essentially seeking direction. We have a lot of different options. We could have two American flags up there. We could have three American flags. We could have two American flags, one state flag. We could have two state, whatever that is. Staff is looking for the direction of what to do with these flags on top. Keep in mind that we cannot move these flags to full staff or half-staff easily. They are, you know, they're, we put them up in the summertime and they stay. So they are lit, keep in mind, but staff is hoping that we, as a group, can give some guidance on what flags we want up there. Staff has pitched two American flags and one POW flag at this point.
Thank you. Does anybody have any input? Mr. Johnson?
I like two American flags and one POW flag.
Excellent. Mr. Bevins?
I, I would certainly support that. I kind of thought one of the American flags should be the City of Brainerd flag.
Oh.
American flag and the POW flag.
Sure.
I like that.
I would love a City of Brainerd flag. I know we had one or two of them up there last year. The material didn't hold up. If we could get those made out of higher-quality material and maybe get a price on that, but, Mr. Jaeger, Mr. Mayor?
Sean, I believe that we had the, the water tower committee gifted us those flags. The ones that we received were incorrect. We got new ones.
Got reinforced.
We got reinforced. Are the new ones better than the old ones?
Yeah, they're reinforced.
Okay.
Yeah, reinforced, much better.
Again, one man's rickety is another man's flag.
Yeah. So this is a discussion we're talking about for next year. They stay up once they go up on Memorial Weekend or whenever we can get... They stay up once they go up on Memorial Weekend or whenever we can get them up there until the end of summer when the weather turns to not what it's like today.
Yep. I'm sorry.
So just looking at that, I don't want this to be a discussion that we have to return to every single year. I want it to be something where, it would be really easy to just keep three American flags up there that unifies everybody. Once you start getting into different flags, you do get into, well, I want my flag up there, I want this flag up there. And I don't want to see that going forward, but looks like Mr. Chesok has it.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
What flags are currently flying up there?
Three American flags.
Okay. What are the, um, what's availability of the City of Brainerd flag of the reinforced variety?
We have two? Oh, we have four.
How often are those flags needed replacing? Does anybody know?
They usually make a season.
Okay. I read an article on Star Tribune about the flag. Maybe some of you saw that, where they're talking specifically about Crow Wing County and the Minnesota flag, and they say they have to be replaced every 90 days. I thought that was kind of, I don't know if that's accurate, but I wouldn't know. I'm just telling you what it said.
They need to reinforce those. Sounds like it.
But I like the idea of a Brainerd flag if we can get them and their quality are good enough to withstand a full year or whatever it is. Otherwise, I would go with the American, two American and the POW.
Okay. So you're, you're, uh...
If we can...
Is the Brainerd flag and two American flags? Or one of each? Well, all three?
What Mr. Bevins said.
Okay.
Same...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson.
Can somebody clarify the motion, please?
Motion would be to have, next year have one American flag, one POW, MIA flag, and one Brainerd city flag.
Perfect.
Does that work? More discussion, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, if, if Kelly's willing, I'd like to clarify the motion saying that this would be our standard flag arrangement going forward. No need to come back with us can ask again until the, the council decides to change it.
Perfect. Happily amended. All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
And that is all for SP&amp;W, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Moving on, Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items. First of which is to approve a renewal of a contract with CLC for our PEG channel operations. And the motion is to approve a three-year contract renewal with Central Lakes College for PEG channel management and staffing of city meetings, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Mr. Johnson?
Pretty much the same three-year contract we're just ending up with. We added PUC and HRA meetings, and we also added a deduction for any, any meeting the CLC can't get to and our staff handles, but it's pretty much the same contract.
Okay. More discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Chesok?
I'm checking in here. Okay, just, uh, in, in what I got in the packet, and that may be my screen reader, it said this contract will be effective July 1st, 20... 20,205. So there's a, that's a typo, I'm sure, obviously, but I just wanted to make sure that's correct. And then it said the ending date, 20285, so that's 20,285. I think it's 2028.
So what...
It's correct in the...
It reads correct on ours, but maybe it's reading it wrong.
Ours says 7/1, 2025 through 6/30, 2028, which is a three-year term that starts last week.
Okay, so, so were you reading, so remain in effect until June 30th?
2028.
Okay, okay, so I just have an extra number in there. No problem. That's what I just wanted to check.
Okay.
That's all I got, thanks.
More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up, we have a request from the Employee Wellness Committee for the Employee Appreciation Event. And the motion is to close city offices from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on October 2nd for the employee appreciation, appreciation event at the Public Works Building, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, you've all been to this event, it's a great time. Sean cooks some amazing barbecue with the help of the entire wellness committee. You will notice, though, that the one change this year that they're going to do at October 2nd, so it'll be a little bit later, but it'll be the same two-hour event that we've blocked off the last couple of years.
We have indoor facilities there, it'll be heated.
And if you don't go, you have to work.
And if you, if you don't go and you're scheduled to work that day, you have to work. Yeah, we talked about that.
Meat versus work.
Mm-hmm.
Heavy appetizers.
All right. All kinds of good stuff. Is part of this motion that Sean does the barbecue?
Oh.
Or was that just expected?
I think it's in the...
All right.
Yeah.
He agrees, he agrees.
It's required.
All right, any more discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesok?
Exactly, I understand all state employees and then council, and who else is invited to this?
Chris, could you handle that better? Tony might be able to handle it.
The only other people are the Public Utilities Commissioners is who we've invited in the past.
Okay. Could we include, um, commissions?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Just the, the Public Utility Commission is the one commission we've invited in the past.
Is there any reason why we don't invite the other members of our other committees?
Sean's grill size?
Yeah, could we include those in the email?
If you look at the numbers, how many of them are there? I mean...
Yep. Nick says we can put them on there.
It's a good gesture.
Let's start that.
Yeah, you can accommodate that, Sean, if we invite another 50 people.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yeah, Jaeger, wait.
Let's invite all commi, let's invite all commissions this year.
All right. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion...
I just have to make a note here, Mr. President. I've served on committees for decades, never been invited. Now that I get on the council, I'm inviting these people who've never been invited.
Looking out for the little guy.
Yes, justice finally served. All right, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, next up, we have an MOU allowing IBEW employees to work at the hydro facility. And the motion is to approve the attached revised MOU allowing IBEW employees to work at the hydro facility through December 31st, 2027, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
We had approved a previous one. There was some discussion with IBEW, some minor changes were made. It has been approved by IBEW, it has been approved by the steelworkers. So if we get our signatures on it tonight, we're set to operate the hydro dam for three more years with IBEW staff.
Excellent. More discussion? Anyone? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Johnson?
Okay, here's an update regarding Minnesota Paid Family and Medical Leave and Ancillary Benefits. And the motion is to accept the Paid Family and Medical Leave Private Plan and Short-Term Disability Proposals from MetLife for benefits to be effective January 1st, 2026, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
If you remember, we went out with an RFP when we learned that it's possible that a private provider may be able to provide a better rate than the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota's expected rate is currently 0.88%. MetLife came back with a total premium rate of 0.79%. So that should save the, the city and the HRA combined around $13,000 in premium a year if we go with the MetLife option.
Very good. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Johnson?
Thank you. Next up is a RFP for Long-Term Disability Insurance, and the motion is to authorize staff and integrity benefits to conduct an RFP process for long-term disability insurance based on our current policy and with an alternative plan designed as proposed, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
Yeah, the alternative plan would be instead of a six-month policy, it'd be a three-month policy. It looks like that's the direction everything is moving in now with the, the new laws with family leave and everything. So we would get both options, but ultimately, uh, we're required by state law to do this, so I encourage a yes vote.
Good point. Okay. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Johnson?
Okay, and our final item was a discussion regarding roles and responsibilities of the city council and the Public Utilities Commission. We talked for about a half hour downstairs. We don't have a motion. We had a lot of agreement on what Kelly and I agree to, but that's two of us. We were missing Kevin. The rest of the council is up here, and we didn't get halfway done with all of the comments in a half hour, so we thought it was best to call a council workshop so we can sit down and kind of talk to each other in less formal setting meeting to try and answer all these questions and decide where we want to go with this. And I think we should do it as soon as possible, but Chris is gone all of next week. So my motion is to set a council workshop date on a date that works for all of us, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Chesok?
Can we put this out for additional comments? For, I, I know one commissioner did not get the notice, and I believe it was just an oversight. So, um, it was Marco Day. And I know the email was sent, and it just got inadvertently included, or not included. And, um, if we've received comments from all of, uh, three council members, I would appreciate it to hear from everybody else and only two Public Utility Commission members. So if we're gonna set a date here out in the future, I don't see any reason why we can't ask the other people to, if they still want to, um, submit something.
Yeah. I have no problem with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Bevins?
I'm pretty sure there's nothing prohibiting council members or public utility members from speaking their mind on any subject, ever.
Including right now?
Right now.
Including right now.
That's why I'm bringing this up, because they, um, it was a deadline here, and it was like a week. We had three weeks in between meetings, so...
Yeah, there was a deadline for this specific item today. But if we're moving forward with a workshop, I would be open to hearing any input from council members that have anything to add, any commissioners that have anything to add. If anyone wants to email that to Nick Broyles, we can put it in a packet for that meeting. Hopefully, we can have a few days to look that over first. But do we want to set a date tonight? We should probably vote on the motion first, but we could do it all at once. If we want to set a date right now, we're just missing a couple council members.
When, when's Chris not here? Next week?
Next week. Okay. Let's just have that done, um, on a poll, then. Can we do that?
Well, I was wondering about the fourth, what is the 28th of July? It's the fourth Monday.
Yeah.
It might just be easier since usually Mondays are, people are off or...
Yeah, you guys aren't doing anything on Monday nights anyway, right?
Six o'clock.
Oh, Connie might be getting ready for the fair.
I, I'd amend the motion to, uh, if I could, to, uh, do it on the 28th of July at six o'clock.
Yep, I'll accept that.
Motion amended. Any more discussion?
Second, are okay with it?
Yep. Uh, Johnson?
Should, should we invite the commission?
Yeah. Yeah, we can invite the commission. Sure.
And are we gonna have staff send out another invitation to provide the comments to all commission members and remind council that didn't do it?
Yep, Nick will do that. All right. More discussion? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion passes. All right. Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Moving on, this is number nine, unfinished business. Nine A, we have a resignation. Blake Higgins from the Planning Commission, looking for a motion to accept that resignation.
I move to accept with regret.
And to declare vacancy on that commission.
Same.
All right. Uh, motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. More discussion? Thank you, Blake, for putting in the effort. We didn't get a reason why, but sometimes it just doesn't work out due to scheduling, whatever. So, um, let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have nine B. This is a call for applicants. First, we have the Honorable Mayor Bedell.
Yes, before our call for applicants, I do have one nomination of Justin Grekula for the Housing Redevelopment Authority.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Chesok. Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Welcome aboard, Mr. Grisula.
Grisula, excuse me. Apologize.
All right, you're still up?
Yes, we have the following positions available for the following commissions. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Housing Redevelopment Authority, we no longer have. The Library Board, one term expiring 2027. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. And the Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026.
All right, and as council president, I have two terms open on the water tower committee, All right, and as council president, I have two terms open on the Water Tower Committee, and we just declared a vacancy on the Planning Commission. I do not know the expiration on that term. Next, we have nine C. This is a final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1586 for Code Enforcement. I believe this is Mr. Krambek.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city currently administers code enforcement on a complaint-driven basis. This proposed ordinance allows for active code enforcement along major thoroughfares around city parks and on the way to inspections, building rental inspections administered by our department. If approved, staff would not hire an intern to administer code enforcement or drive up and down every street and alley, as done in previous years. So with that, staff recommends to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1586 and dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing, and approve Proposed Ordinance 1586. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Krambek, does anybody have questions for James? Doesn't look like it. So we are just looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1586 and dispense with the actual reading.
So move.
By Cezak, second by Jaeger. As a reminder, this has to be unanimous to not have an actual reading. So, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yep.
Cezak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that is the final reading. Now, we're just looking to hold the public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. It is 8:16. If there's anybody here to speak on this, please come forward. If there's anyone online that wants to speak on this, please press star three. Seeing none, we'll ask one more time. If anyone wants to come forward, please do so, and we will close the public hearing at 8:16.
Motion to approve ordinance 1586.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Cezak. Any discussion? Seeing none. Tony, call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Cezak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, we have an ordinance. Nine D, we have a public hearing and adoption of, an adopt resolution for Williams Street Right-of-Way Vacation. Again, is this, Mr. Habegorst? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached to this request is a petition to vacate a portion of William Street Right-of-Way on Northwest Brainerd. The map proposes this right-of-way vacation is attached. The petition was received by the council on June 2nd, and the meeting was declared sufficient, and a public hearing was called for tonight's meeting. Staff is recommending holding this public meeting here and to hear testimony for or against the proposed vacation as submitted. Staff is also recommending adoption of the attached resolution in which vacates the segment of William Street right-of-way while reserving utility easements. With that, take any questions?
Anybody have questions for Mr. Habegorst? Looks like we don't, so let's go ahead and open that public hearing. It is 8:18. If there's anybody here to give testimony for or against the proposed vacation, please come forward. And I'll just ask you to please state your name and address before you start.
My name's Mary Hamid. My address is 202 Northwest Sixth Street in Brainerd. It's the property currently showed on the screen there. We purchased that property in 1988, and in 1992, we built a building, and then we built another building. We had an upholstery business and commercial rental in the first building. We were there a lot, so we built another building, and the city was gracious enough to let us live there. And I do want to say thanks for the previous council members that have helped us over the years and the current ones. So we built a second building. So when we did surveys all along, Wood Seth was the main person we worked with. And as the second building, there was a point where we were possibly going to move and investigated the thought of separating the buildings. There's four lots on Block 26. In the midst of that, we found out that back building was over the line a little bit. So we came to the city, worked with the guys for a few months, and they did vacate some of the property, because the railroad pulled out in that process. So the first vacate we had was 14 feet, and that was 2002. And thought it was solved. So then, we had tenants, the commercial tenants, it was a lot of young families, so we had the commercial there to support our income and offer space for other businesses. The Brink's Granite City rented one of the double garages in that last second building. They outgrew the space, wanted to stay, so we built another garage for them with an overhead door and a three-stall. And did due diligence again. Wood Seth did it. We had good people involved in the building. It was inspected a number of times. We got it approved, got the permit approved, and they did give us certificate of occupancy. Currently, I am listing the property. I want to move on, spend time with my family and grandkids. During this process, we found out that the back garage is over the line. So what happened, there was a 14-foot and a 40-vacate. They got overlapped, so I approached a different surveyor just to get a new set of eyes on it, and his assumption was that those two vacates were overlapped and only was 40 feet. The 40 feet included that 14 feet was a little, like, taken back, because, you know, we did the best we could. We've always taken pride and tried to do the right thing with our property. And so that's what I'm dealing with now. I listed my property. I have a really good buyer, good people. I think they'll keep, maintain the property well and keep it going like we intended and offer rentals to other businesses. So that's why I'm proposing. Talking with the surveyor, Jim Kramer, he's proposed 4611 square feet. It looks like 58 by, 119 by 58 off the back there, to solve the problem with the garage. So that's my situation, and it's been an asset to the community, I think. You know, it's in a good area. It's right on the, it's a good location for the other businesses. It's right on the line of Baxter and Brainerd, and it's serving a good purpose. So I'm just hoping you guys can help me out with that and see what you can, any solutions that you have, I'd appreciate.
Thank you. This is going to, maybe this is a better question for staff, but this is going to solve that issue if it does pass?
Yes, yes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for or against? Or anyone online? Please press star three. It's like no one online, no one in here. All right, we will close the public hearing. It is 8:23. Staff's opinion is that we will never be using this chunk of land for a street like it was originally platted. There's no room for it, anyway. It solves the issue. Does anybody have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
So I heard it solves the problem, but I thought when we vacated streets, like, half of it goes in one direction, half goes the other direction. At this one, we're proposing it all to go to the northerly property?
Otherwise.
I'm asking staff a question, thank you, though.
In general, yes, it's a 50-50 split. In this instance, the trail right-of-way is what borders in the south, so the entirety would be recommended to go to the north.
Thank you.
The trail is state-owned? Anybody know?
Hang on, the attorney's got some questions.
Yeah, correct. The DNR owns and operates the state trail there.
All right.
I'd move to approve staff's recommendations.
Second. Motion by Cezak, second by Bevins. Mr. Lengel?
Just a quick comment. That's state property, so the rule that council member was talking about in terms of half going each direction is true. And so if they wanted, if, to get titled to that whole thing, they would typically have to get that title from the state, since that's Paul Bunyan Trail property, if they want all of it.
So she would still have another step to go through after this?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a city problem. That's, it's nothing that you can do about it, because you don't have control over that rule. So it's, you can vacate it, makes sense to vacate it, but half of that is going to go to the trail property.
Okay, thank you, Joe, that's what I thought.
All right. Well, we still have a motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah? Oh, is this a resolution? Well.
Johnson?
Go ahead.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Cezak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Let's see, we have, that is it for that one. So if, ma'am, if you have questions for staff, please just reach out tomorrow. I think we've done our part here, so good luck. All right, moving on to nine E. This is a public hearing and a resolution for the alley vacation for Block 164 in the town of Brainerd. Again, Habegorst?
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached to this request is a petition to vacate the Platte Alley within Block 164 in the original town of Brainerd. A map of the proposed alley is attached for everyone. The alley is, the north and south alley located between Blocks Holly and Groove Street and Seventh Street and Eighth Street. The alley does not show on the GIS mapping, but however, has never been officially vacated per the records. So staff is recommending holding a public hearing to hear public testimony for or against the proposed vacation as submitted. Staff is also recommends of the attached resolution in which vacates the alley while preserving utility easements. With that, we can take any questions?
All right, anybody have questions for Mr. Habegorst?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Cezak.
I just want to clarify, this is an alley that runs north and south between Seventh and Eighth, and north end is on Grove and the south end is on Ivy, or Holly, I'm sorry. North end is on Holly and the south end is on Grove. Is that correct?
North end is Grove, south end is Holly.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? All right. Looks like we don't have anymore, so let's go ahead and have this public hearing. Open it up, it's 8:27. If anybody has any testimony for or against this proposed vacation, please come forward. Looks like we don't have anybody in here, but if we have anybody online, please press star three. We'll ask one more time. If there's anybody that wants to give their testimony, please come forward, and we will close that public hearing at 8:28. Next, we're just looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution, which vacates the alley while reserving utility easements.
Mr. Chair, a question for staff.
Okay, go for it.
How does it that the GIS map makes an alleyway disappear when there's no documentation that the alleyway doesn't exist?
I couldn't answer why the county did not have that on the GIS map. As indicated, I threw the easement in there that we acquired about 15 years ago for that replacement project. So it's possible that staff, even back 15 years ago, that this was not shown on the GIS map, so they may have seen this as vacated at that time, too, so we wanted to retain the easement. But as far as we could find, we could not find the resolution where this was officially vacated, so we wanted to kind of clean that up at the request of the petitioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No more questions? Tony? Looking for a motion still?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Johnson, motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Go ahead, Tony.
Johnson?
Yep.
Jaeger?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yes.
Cezak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that passes. Now, we have an additional item. Mr. Cezak, this is nine F for the Crow Wing County data request. Do you want to take this one?
The data, I think the council should find out about is dispersments that coincide with the grant money the county is providing to the shelter. And we did not get anything for May, and I think it may have had to been, because the request was made on June 2nd, the dispersments would not have been approved, or June 3rd, I forget, yeah, because of the county board meeting having to approve those would have been the following week. So I would like to, I guess I would just make a motion that staff make another data requests for any dispersments regarding the same grant for the months of May and June, and ask that this be made at the end of the week, and then also, so the county board meets tomorrow. And then also, the, for any, any money dispersed to the Bridge on Seventh or any other businesses related to this grant funding, and I so move.
We have a motion by Cezak. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jaeger's second was louder. Do we have a motion?
I whispered that.
Cezak?
More distinct.
And second by Jaeger. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Cezak?
Yeah, I just think we should know.
Okay. Excellent. All right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to number 10, this is new business, 10A. We have a approval of reapportionment of assessment and call for a public hearing for Beaver Dam Road. Is this, Mr. Krambek? Jesse Dean?
It's going to be City Engineer Jesse.
Okay, Mr. Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I did my best to explain a complicated situation in the agenda item. So several years ago, when we did the Beaver Dam Utility Extension Project, we placed a deferred assessment on that larger Lind, roughly 40-acre parcel. After that time, a portion of that parcel was sold to the Jedlinski's in the kind of northeast corner, if you can see it in the map. When that happened, the county reassigned the parcel ID number, the legacy parcel ID number. The number that was, had the deferred assessment attached to it, was actually assigned to the smaller parcel, and they assigned a new number to the larger one. So this kind of put a little bit of a snafu and put the deferred assessment essentially on the wrong parcel. Didn't come to our attention until an assessment search was done on the larger parcel, so this became kind of known to us. So fast forwarding to now, we're kind of trying to look, clean this up. Looked into the history of that. The House kind of predated the project, so we essentially reran the scenario using the methodology that was used to calculate the original assessments back at that time, to come up with the recommendation of what the reapportionment would be for the Lind property, and did include that in here. So staff is looking for direction with the recommendation for the council to reapportion the assessment according to how the council agenda is kind of written, and then call for a public hearing on this matter at the August 4th council meeting. I can answer some more questions. Like I said, it's a complicated matter.
Thank you. Yep.
I have a question of staff.
Mr. Bevins, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. In Mr. Habegorst's email, he states that the smaller Jedlinski parcel would not have been impacted or assessed originally in the project, because it has no frontage on the project, I presume is why. He does not state why he mentions that. And my question was, why are we assessing any of it now if it was, I mean, if it wouldn't have been assessed in the first place? It seems like the whole assessment, the $106,000 plus interest, should go on the larger parcel, because that's the only parcel that was impacted by the, by the road project, and any portion of that assessment that the seller thought Mr. Jedlinski should pay should have been taken care of at the time that he purchased it, because that's when special assessments are paid. We've run into this in the past, where we never required people to pay their assessments ever, strangely enough, but now we do, which is good. My point is, I don't think Mr. Jedlinski should pay anything. He wasn't on the prop, he wasn't on the assessment role to begin with as, as part of the project.
And if, I can clarify, Mr. President, the recommendation is not to reapportion any of the assessment to the Jedlinski property. The entirety would be reapportioned to the Lind property with the recalculated amounts based on the methodology.
They're just reducing the one by $3,000 plus.
Correct, using the adjusted acreage.
Got it, you're not, you're not putting $3,000 on to Jedlinski.
Not, not in the recommendation, no.
You bet. All right, that clears that up. Any other discussion or questions? So we're looking for opening a public hearing on this one first? Is that what staff's recommendation is?
It's set to schedule.
On the 4th? Scheduled on the 4th?
Looking for action from the council if you're approving of, going forward with this reapportionment to call for a public hearing on the matter on the 4th.
So move Bevins.
Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Cezak. Any other discussion? Mr. Johnson?
I just, I'm looking at this GIS map, and I see that the GIS has Country Manor Way included on it already, so that's exciting to see.
Oh, yeah.
It's a four-lane highway.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion we have on the table here? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That one carries. 10B, we have a discussion of the orderly annexation of Riverside Drive. Looks like James and Jesse are both listed on here. Who wants to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I'll take it first and then turn it over to Engineer Dean. Municipalities by joint resolution with the county may designate an unincorporated area in which there is no organized township government as in need of orderly annexation. This would then go to a Minnesota judge for a public hearing and consideration. The area in question along Riverside Drive is in unorganized first assessment territory. The Crow Wing County Board serves as the township board. Staff has had preliminary discussions with county staff regarding the annexation of this area due to the availability of municipal utilities. Before consideration, staff was directed to bring items to council concerning connection charges as well as the rural service district. City council decided that all future properties annexed into the city of Brainerd will be taxed at the general city tax rate and will not be eligible for the rural service tax district rate. In addition, city council decided that deferred connection fees along Riverside Drive must be paid in full, including accrued interest. And I'll turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, James, and counsel. So staff, you kind of selected the area that's highlighted in the map based on where essentially most of the availability to the existing utility is. We essentially extended the utility along the Riverside Drive corridor, essentially up to the Shady Hills Trail up in the north part of the, the map. There are a couple spots where we don't currently have utility services. For example, the extension of Ashman Road to the dead end. But to avoid any kind of island spots of areas where would essentially get isolated, we did include them in the recommendation of the area. So this kind of cleans up most of the corridor in an area that we could essentially serve pretty easily with utilities. So that's how staff came up with the recommendation for the area. And then there are just a few streets. Some of these streets have already been included in a shared maintenance agreement with the county, so some of these were already doing some routine maintenance on right now. For instance, like Ashman Road, we're doing routine maintenance on right now, even though it is a county-maintained street. Should this be annexed into the city, it is likely they become city streets at that point officially. We have started to get some of the records from the county on a lot of these streets, so that way we do have those records and can evaluate them and roll them into our city street network if need be. And can answer further questions on that.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Bevins?
Jesse, before moving forward with.
Go ahead.
What'd you say?
You both had your hand up. I said Bevins, but go ahead.
Before moving forward with annexation, would we, we'll get the information on the street age and quality or whatever. Would we take in that immediate expense of any streets that need to be redone and work that into an annexation agreement? Or are we, would we just be going in knowing that there's a $200,000 project next year and that just is what it is?
Depending on, uh, so there's not very many of the streets that we would be taking on. Ashman's probably the biggest one and it's in pretty generally good condition right now. Uh, depending on what you're looking for and what the, the county would be agreeable to, uh, I couldn't answer that question. Um, I would say they're in generally good shape, like Car Drive, for instance, would be one that we would take over the right of way of. It's mostly gravel.
Okay.
Pathway right now.
I'm just concerned about taking on a lot of liabilities if, if all the roads are in bad condition. I have no idea what they are.
They are not in poor condition.
Okay.
They're not in poor?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another question for engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Does, so if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, this would require those odd parcels that are technically within the boundaries of the city of Brainerd, but are no, but are not in the city of Brainerd to forcibly annex? Am I reading that correctly? Is that what an orderly annexation agreement is?
Yes, orderly annexation, um, would be a joint resolution with the county. Um, but essentially, yes, then there'd be required to, um, to annex if joint resolutions pass as well as passed by the, um, Minnesota judge.
Okay. And then my second question, Mr. Chair, also of staff, is doesn't this violate what I believe to be a agreement we had when we put the sewer and water in and the county did the road to not forcibly annex any of those people ever?
So I'll, I'll begin that. I'm not aware of an agreement. Jesse may be able to look something up. Um, I do, I did include the policy from, I think it was 2003, that talked about, um, after three years, if your sewer hasn't failed, these county properties would then be required to hook up and then essentially uh, be annexed into the city of Brainerd. So that was included. Um, I, I, I don't know if there's any other agreement on record.
What you just stated is if their sewer fails, this agreement doesn't say that, does it?
Actually, so I actually believe if, if their sewer fails, um, they'd be required within one year, otherwise it was a three-year connection.
Correct. It's not an agreement, it's part of our city code. If they're annexed into the city limits, our city code takes over. It's a portion of the sewer code that's, it's called compelling connection. So there, they can own and operate their septic system until it no longer meets, uh, meets standards and fails. Then they're required to connect into the city system at that time.
I'm hearing a contradiction. On one hand, if their sewer fails. On the other hand, they're forcibly annexed regardless of whether their sewer is, oh, I'm sorry, regardless of whether their septic system is still acceptable. Which one is it? Are we, are we forcibly annexing them all or only those whose sewer, whose septic systems have failed?
So the way the old policy worked is would force annexation through a septic failure or a number of years, which we cannot do. Um, if they're not part of our city code, we cannot, you know, essentially enact something like that. So that policy was essentially null and void. So the only way to get them onto services would be to annex them by orderly annexation.
Regardless of whether their septic system has failed.
That's correct.
Okay. So I have a recollection that we told these people when we did this and I pretty sure I might even be able to find it for you, that we would not forcibly annex these people regard, unless their septic system failed. At, from that perspective, I would absolutely want to hold a public hearing, but secondly, vote against this ordinance. So.
That all? That's it. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chesok?
Yes, I think of my questions for Attorney Lengel, if I could. Um, so if this, Joe, if the city sets policy as being discussed here, does that policy bind a future council from changing it or going against it?
No, it doesn't, a policy doesn't bind the council. Policies can be changed by the council anytime you want.
The same with any kind of agreement that may have been made 20 years ago?
Agreement with whom?
Pardon, pardon me?
What kind of agreement with, with whom?
Such as being discussed here, what, they say that the council took action, they had an agreement with the property owners on Riverside or on Beaver Dam. Um, no, we're talking about Riverside, I'm sorry. Um, and, uh, what, so whatever, whatever was agreed upon through council action, such as this, uh, as Mr. Bevins is indicating, does that agreement formally, uh, bind a future city council?
That would depend on the terms and conditions of the agreement. And I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. And, and we don't know if there is an agreement, is what I think, Mr. Bevins?
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. Chesek. It was 22 years ago, so it just seems that I recall this and I'm, I certainly could be incorrect. It was a long time ago. All I'm suggesting is that we hold off with an orderly annexation. Well, first of all, I don't know that the council, since I've been on it, has ever done a forced annexation. It's kinda been against what we've done. But second, it seems like there was a specific agreement that we would not forcibly annex these people to try and get the project done. We were trying not to have a battle with all the property owners that were at the time not part of the city of Brainerd.
So I think the confusion is in the change that the state made to the law because we promised or the council you were on in 2003 seems to maybe have promised something like that, that we would not go through a forced annexation. And it was still legal to go through the process of forcing an annexation at that time. Now, they just changed the name to orderly annexation, but it's, it's more of an agreement between the two entities, which would be Crowing County and the city of Brainerd. And then we would send that off to a judge down at the state level and they would judge whether or not we were forcibly annexing them. So we could go through this entire process and then the judge could just say, nope, sorry guys, can't do that. But...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah. It, it does, it does make sense to, to try it because of the infrastructure that we have, uh, because of our watershed, because of those septics right along the river. It's not, not a great idea. Same with along the lake, uh, Gilbert.
Not disagreeing with any of that.
Yeah. So I, I lean, I lean towards going through with it. I think it's inevitable. We have an island of unannexed land that's completely surrounded by city property. We, we, I can think of one other area, maybe we have that in town. Um, I don't think it's good for development. I don't think it's good for when we assess projects, like when we have to redo this street or any of the utilities or electrical or anything. It just makes things work smoother. Uh, Mr. Chesok?
I guess I think another question for staff, if I could. Um, if, if the council proceeds forward to approving this tonight, when does the county board, when does this put in front of them?
So first, uh, city staff would work with county staff on drafting a joint resolution along with our, our city attorney. So it would be a, a to be determined type thing. So certainly we'd want some type of agreement between staff that we're moving in the right direction and then we'd bring it to city council and our, and our, and the county board.
All right. So for tonight, we're looking for a recommendation, your, the staff's recommendation is to initiate the orderly annexation process for a portion of Riverside Drive as depicted in the proposed annexation map. So we're looking for a motion for that.
So move.
By Chesok.
Second.
Jaeger? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Chesok?
Yeah, the, the thing here is our infrastructure, we all know it costs a lot of money. And, uh, I've never been, been a real big advocate for this type of annexation. But when we've invested this kind of money in the infrastructure and it's sitting there and so, so few property owners are contributing to the cost and it's not, it, 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 it carries over into every part of our infrastructure. This revenue that the city will receive once the property owners are paying into it on a monthly basis. If, if we don't collect what we need to collect, we get behind the eight ball way too much and we've done it way too long. Start doing the responsible thing as a city. And that's what I think we're doing here tonight if we pass this. As difficult as it may be.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Chesok. Anyone else? No more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to 10D. We have a consideration of fire escrow for 614 Front Street. Again, uh, this is James Cranwick.
Parking setback.
Parking setback.
Did I miss one? Oh, I did. All right, we'll get that one next. Let's go back to 10C. Consideration of variance request to allow a reduced parking setback for 525 Washington Street. James Cranwick?
Thank you, Mr. President. High-tech construction on behalf of Jake Brandt State Farm Agency has submitted a variance request to allow for a rear parking lot with a zero foot setback, uh, to the alley at 525 Washington Street. Currently, non-residential uses must maintain a three-foot rear yard setback. The elimination of on-street parking along Washington Street due to the reconstruction project is a contributing factor for this request, uh, which was not caused by the landowner. Most properties located in the commercial corridor district have zero foot setbacks to the rear property line for their driveways and parking lots. So this request would be consistent with the surrounding properties. Uh, the planning commission considered this request and held a public hearing at their meeting on June 18th and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cranwick. Anybody have questions for James? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chesok, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That carries. Moving on to 10D, now we have the consideration of fire escrow for 16, or 614 Front Street. Again, James Cranwick?
Thank you, Mr. President. So a fire occurred at 614 Front, Front Street on June 4th, 2025. 614 Front Street is a mixed-use building containing three commercial tenants, uh, with second-floor apartments. The city of Brainerd is allowed to hold a 25% escrow from the final insurance payout of fire damaged structures. Uh, Mr. Perringer has begun to remove debris from the fire and has applied for an interior demolition permit. At this time, Mr. Perringer intends to remodel the structure, but will need final architectural and structural drawings to do so, uh, specifically related to the roof. Uh, if a property owner does not demolish or remodel a fire damaged building, the city will be responsible for the demolition of the structure and incurred cost will be assessed to the property. Uh, Mr. Perringer is requesting that the city waive the right to hold the fire escrows. Funds will be needed to repair, uh, and re, and, and remodel the structure. Um, certainly things are moving in the right direction for that. Uh, staff typically makes determinations regarding the fire escrow based on severity of damage. Staff does not hold fire escrows typically for interior smoke damage, uh, but does typically hold it if there are structural issues. Uh, staff is seeking direction from city council regarding the fire escrow for this property due to the size of the building, uh, the cost that would be associated with removal as well as the importance to the building to downtown. Uh, Mr. Perringer has included a letter for city council to consider and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, James. I have a quick question. Uh, I wanna do whatever we can to save the building. It's a big part of downtown. Um, but I wanna make sure we're at the right step in the process. It doesn't seem to me like we have a 100% certain checkmark there from the engineers that say this, this structure is safe and savable. Does that, has that come across yet?
So, um, initial conversations, it does seem like the structure is, you know, potentially savable, but really at what cost? Um, so that's kinda the, the, you know, final determining factor. There's no building permit issued right now for the repairs for the roof. Um, the facade of the building still has to be evaluated. Um, certainly things are moving in the right direction and our conversations have been moving in the right direction, but yes, it is unknown right now. And the difficulty is if the city requests the, the fire escrow and we receive that money, it can only be released on certain conditions. So that's where, um, Mr. Perringer is kinda preemptively asking, um, city council to potentially waive that fire escrow.
Okay. Mr. Chesok?
What's the need to do this now and not wait until we see more, um, say, uh, more, more of Mr. Perringer's investment into the, um, repair and...
So again, our, our building official did, um, some research on this and there are only certain instances, once the city of Brainerd, um, receives those fees. So right now, the insurance adjuster is going through the building, seeing what the value is worth based on the fire damage. And then once that payout happens, if we haven't requested those funds to be held, we wouldn't receive them. If we do request that we'd hold them, then we receive those funds and really the, the way to return that is either the structure is remodeled and has received a certificate of occupancy or it's been demolished.
So only after the project is done, one way or another, fixed or demolished?
If we've received those funds.
Okay. And how long does it take to receive those funds? I mean, I, I've never even heard of this type of fund before, so I'm just learning this.
You voted for it?
I voted for it?
So, so again, if we receive those funds, um, it's just, probably anticipate within the next month, the insurance payout would happen. Um, so if we receive those, we would have to then wait until, um, something's either been remodeled with the building or removed. Um, again, we're probably anticipating those insurance, um, payouts to be done in the next month here.
Okay. So my, I, I, that's where I'm trying to figure out if there's like this sweet spot, you know, two weeks from now, do we know more about the building and, and what they're proposing to do? And then we forego those funds? Would it make more sense then? Or would it make more sense today because we're so confident that that's gonna happen? You know, I, I guess it's up to the council, but Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, yeah. My, same question. I just need a, a clearer answer for me. Looking at, reading Dave's letter here, he said he hired the engineering company and they will be complete with their drawings within about two weeks. Can we put this off for two weeks and see what his engineers come back with? And then have, make a more informed decision then?
We most likely would be able to. Um, I don't have 100% certainty with where they are at with the, the payouts. We could certainly speak to the insurance adjuster and where they're at with that. Um, most likely we could wait for another two weeks. We could request the funds as an option, um, if, if all of a sudden it gets paid out and we are gonna receive them. And then, but if that doesn't happen, I can still bring it back to council in the next meeting.
So say we try to steal this insurance, these insurance proceeds and we get them. And you said, there's only certain circumstances in which we could release them back to the building owner. Is redeveloping, rebuilding the building, one of those circumstances in which we could?
When our building official looked into it, it, it seemed like it was by state statute that only when there's a certificate of occupancy and the building's been fully remodeled, that those funds would be returned.
So it'd be after the whole renovation process?
That's correct.
So he'd be going to a lender, taking out his own money to do it instead of insurance proceeds?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I, reading this letter, I mean, it sounds like Dave's gonna, working on rebuilding this building and I've, I've been around 11 years, he's been around a lot longer, but he, I haven't found him to be dishonest in any way whatsoever. So I think if he's going to be rebuilding this building, that's, that's what he's going to do. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Chesok?
Um, is, if, if we move forward with, um, acquiring these funds, is there any way we could help Mr. Perringer out with some, something like, uh, a revolving loan? Um, and help him on the backside where we hold this money and we in turn, um, provide him some low, uh, interest, uh, help to help him in the meantime?
Are you wearing any ones?
You know, there's something we could look into. Generally, our revolving loans are only $25,000 and I'm assuming that the proceeds would be more than $25,000. I mean, it's something we could look into. Um, it's not something we've done in the past, but we could look into it in more detail. I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have the time.
This is about 177,000. So I can see where Mr. Perringer is coming from. It does, it's, it's just the risk mitigation that comes across my mind. Worst case scenario, we get stuck with a building, Mr. Perringer skips town and we never see him again and, and we're stuck with this building, but he also owns however, however many other buildings downtown. I don't think he's gonna do that, so. I think it's, it's probably a safer bet than that. But if you guys are comfortable with it, then somebody can make a motion. Or we can wait for two weeks from now. You can make a motion for that, too. Do we have a motion?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, uh, waive the fire escrow.
Second, Johnson.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Johnson. Kelly, did you have something or?
No, I'll support the motion.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. Alright, moving on to 10E. We have a first reading for proposed ordinance 1588 to amend section 515-3, allowed uses, Appendix A, table of uses to allow office business in the general industrial district. James Cranwick?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Central Minnesota Dermatology, an existing local dermatology business, is interested in constructing a new dermatology clinic in the industrial park and have provided a letter of intent. Office business and medical clinics are currently not allowed in the general industrial zoning district, but was in the previous code. Planning Commission considered the proposed ordinance and unanimously recommended approval at their June 18th meeting. So, with that, staff recommends to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1588 and dispense with the actual reading.
Alright, thank you. So, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Yep.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any discussion?
I got a question.
Mr. Chesok?
Is this kind of like spotzoning?
No, it would be continuing the same zone, but we would just be allowing business, what is it, business in what?
Industrial.
Business in medical clinics in industrial zones anywhere in the city.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would just like to say, like, to Jeff's point, it's quite the opposite. It's allowing it pretty much anywhere within it. But I do want to just continually say, and I will say this every time along this process, that the industrial zone is loud, smelly, and noisy, you know? And just, I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I fully support this 100%, but if you're going to take on that, just remember, it's an industrial park. Does industrial things.
Is there noise in the industrial park?
This is the quietest street in Brainerd.
Not that one.
Not, not currently. Not currently.
Any more discussion? Alright. Seeing none, let's go, well, this is a first reading. Tony, do I need to call the roll? No? Alright, this is a voice vote. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion passes. Excellent. Moving on, 10F. We have a first reading of proposed ordinance 1589 to amend section 515-4-11, fence standards. James Cranwick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Corner lot property owners consistently have issues with the construction of backyard privacy fences. The fence often bisects properties, splitting the backyard in half. A couple pictures have been included in the package showing what the current ordinance is, as well as what it would look like if the proposed ordinance passes. The proposed language is for corner properties. In the, if the rear yard abuts an alley, a fence up to six and one-half feet high may be erected from a line extended from the rear corner of the principal building to the side corner lot line, and then along the side corner lot line to the rear lot line. The Planning Commission considered the proposed ordinance and unanimously recommended approval at the June 18th meeting. So, with that, staff's recommendation is to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1589 and dispense with the actual reading.
Thank you, James. Anyone have questions? If not, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
What?
I'll, I'll finish. I'll, I'll make a motion, conduct the first reading of ordinance 1589 and dispense with the actual reading.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Johnson. Mr. Chesok?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to anybody out there who has issues with fences, or perhaps anything else, to contact Mr. Johnson. We saw a property owner have the same problem, and they didn't follow the rules and paid a heavy fine. And I appreciate what Gabe did here, and he got this rolling for a constituent, and I think it's the right thing, and I'll support it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff for his support. Thanks, James, for the hard work he's put in on this, and thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for seeing that this is a, this is a good amendment to the zoning code. So, thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. 10G. Next, we have a first reading for proposed ordinance 1590, annexation of Dunmire's. And again, this is James Cranwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Christopher Dunmire has submitted a petition for annexation of parcel 81160517, which includes Dunmire's Bar and Grill. The public hearing has been set by City Council for July 21st. At that meeting, Oakland Township has reached out to the city staff and has not voiced any concerns at this time. This was discussed at their township board. So, with that, staff recommends to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1590 and dispense with the actual reading.
Alright, anybody have questions for James? Otherwise, we're looking for that motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Chesok, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 10H. We have a resolution to award a bid for the improvement 2313, Trunk Highway 371B and Willow Street Roundabout Project. This is Mike Abigors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bids for this project were open Thursday, June 26th. Attached to this request are the bids and the resolution accepting those results for this project, 371 Willow Street Roundabout Project. The improvements also include reconfiguration of the intersection of Highway 371 and Willow Street into a roundabout, and reconstruction of Willow Street from 6th to 7th Street. As a reminder, this is a grant-funded project. It's a 90/10 match, so part of the street costs were eligible for the grant. Other stuff was not, and staff is recommending adopting this attached resolution in which accepts the bids and awards a contract to Landwear Construction in the total contract amount of $1,000,0412,747.85, and authorize proper signatures and the agreement attached.
Thank you, Mr. Abigors. Anybody have questions?
Yep.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Love seeing it come in 10% under engineer's estimate. So, we have the $750,000 grant, and we have some enterprise funds, water mains, and sanitary sewer. How much is coming out of the construction fund or the, or just levy dollars for this project?
Jesse, can you get specifics with that?
The intent is all of our, the local match funds that are not associated with the utilities would be municipal state aid.
Okay. Do we know how much municipal state aid we intend to be using on this project?
Roughly about $200,000, $250,000.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. More questions? If we don't have any more questions, we're looking for that motion to adopt the attached resolution in which accepts the bids and awards the contract to Landwear Construction, Inc., in the total contract amount of $1,412,747.85, and authorize proper signatures on the agreement documents. So, we have a motion by Chesok.
Second.
Second by Bevins. Any discussion on the motion?
Just wondering if anybody wants to talk about the streetlights that we didn't do.
Mr. Chesok is wondering if anybody wants to talk about the streetlights? Are you talking about stoplights?
No.
Oh, yeah. Because we bring it up every single time?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it would have been much cheaper and done years ago.
Here, here.
Johnson and Bedeau both wanted to. Anyone else? Nope, okay. Looks like we have a resolution. If there's no more discussion, Tony?
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesok?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That resolution carries. Moving on to 10I. We have a resolution supporting the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office Agreement. This was submitted by Chesok. Presenter is listed as Nick Broyles.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can kick this off, and then Councilman Chesok, if you have anything to add, please, we would love to hear your words on this. But the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Department, Crow Wing County via their Sheriff's Department, passed an enforcement agreement, basically expressing their support of U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. That was in March of 2025. We did not get that in the packet, I apologize for that. I sent that out to all the council members today. Hope you had a chance to take a look at that. Basically, the attached resolution is echoing those same sentiments in support of our cooperation with the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. Staff's recommendation would be to adopt the attached resolution. Councilman Chesok, did you have anything to add, to add to that?
Yeah, I would just ask that the resolution, if passed, be read by Mayor Bedeau, and that we also, if passed, send a copy to the sheriff's office and then also the county board.
Alright.
The mayor, the mayor is dyslexic, and reading is about as fun to him as having nails on chalkboard, but I will graciously accept.
Alright.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chesok, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Johnson?
I'm glad to see the county did this. I think, I think we should respect all the laws in this country, and they should all be enforced, and if we don't like them, we should get them changed instead of not enforcing them.
Agreed. Other discussion?
This was brought to me by a citizen, and he helped me draft it, and I'm very proud to do it.
Citizen to be named at a later date?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. This is a resolution. Tony?
Johnson?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yep.
Bevins?
Yep.
Chesok?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That resolution carries. And now, moving on to...
Can you read it?
Oh, you want it right now? Alright.
I'll get out my best reading eyes here. Resolution to support the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office Agreement. Whereas we, on the council, are public servants and understand the hard choices that sometimes must be taken in times that are quite difficult and even divisive, excuse me, we are convinced it is important for governing entities to support each other and acknowledge that we have good, solid people in offices in Crow Wing County. The sheriff's office, right now, is certainly an example we can all be proud of and be sure that such decisions being made by them are sincerely coming from allegiance to their oaths and made in their studied assessment of the best interests and needed security of the citizens of Crow Wing County and the safety of all its inhabitants. Be it resolved that the city of, the city, excuse me, be it resolved, the Brainerd City Council hereby fully resolves to endorse the enforcement agreement Sheriff Clang and his office entered into with Immigration and Customs Enforcement this past March.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Alright. We'll move on to the final new business item, I believe, and that is a discussion on airport funding. This was submitted by Councilman Johnson, and again, Nick Broyles is the presenter. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I can kick this off, and Councilman Johnson, if you have any words, please jump in. Basically, obviously, we're in budget season. What staff is looking for is this direction from council to work with county staff. I've had informal coffee with Debbie Erickson, and we started talking about the airport and what we're going, what that might look like in fiscal year 2026. So, I would like to start working with county staff, with Neil Plans, or the interim airport director, and perhaps the electeds from both boards, Councilman Jaeger and Commissioner Barrows, to come up with a proposal for budget year 2026 for the airport. So, we're just looking for direction from the council for staff to start those conversations.
Johnson?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This was brought to me by a citizen to be named later, and reminded me that last year, we asked the county to have a discussion about the city and counties' levy responsibilities for the airport, and we never received a written response that I've seen. There is a lot of updates on conversations that people are having, not publicly and nor writing it down. I just thought, since they said we were too late last year, maybe we should just ask them earlier this year if they're willing to have a conversation and maybe get a written response of some sort. So, I mean, my motion would be to request that the Crow Wing County have a discussion with the City of Brainerd on the funding, and the future funding of our joint venture, the Brainerd Lakes Airport, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Chesok. Discussion?
Oh, go ahead, I'll let Mr. Johnson go, because my question is actually of him.
Yeah, I just, this, we've been talking about this for years, and there's so little documented anything. There's a lot of verbal updates, there's no, there's no history to uncover when we try to figure out where this conversation has gone in the last, like, three, four years we've been talking about it, because it's all conversations between, you know, Debbie and Nick, or, or Kevin and somebody, and it's, I would like to have a paper trail of things written down on paper of where we're going, and I think that should just be part of the public discussion we're having about this public entity that we jointly own as a public entity with another public entity. I think, I think we should have more public discussion on this. That's why I bring this motion. Kelly?
I 100% support the motion, which, did I second it? I don't even remember. But anyway, I wanted to see that you mentioned that the county board has responded that we were too late, and I hadn't seen that. I had heard it, but I never saw it. So, maybe that's the point of the motion, unless you can provide the documentation that you just stated.
I, I did share it with Nick, it didn't make it to the packet. It was not written down in a public document provided to the public. It was in a Brainerd Daily Dispatch article where the board chair last year was quoted in the newspaper as saying they requested too late.
You believe everything you read?
Everything I read, the Dispatch is an honorable organization, as long as they're not talking about some issues.
Alright. Like airport funding.
Alright. Any more discussion? Mr. Chesok?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, to Mr. Bevins's point, it wa, it's now the county board chair, last year wasn't, but he was quoted, I believe it. So, reporters are good about that. They don't put things in quotes unless it's actually said. So, we were late, we need to, the offer was said essentially that, if I'm not mistaken, that it's kind of like, they need to come to us, that means we need to go to them. That's what they were asking for. At least, the county board chair at that time said that. So, or currently said that at that time. So, that's where I'm at in favor of this, so we need to get the ball rolling. If they need to be asked sooner, I think it's better we do it now than wait any longer.
Thank you, Mr. Chesok. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just could say that I, I support all discussions between us and the county on whatever issues that we can try to resolve, and I, I agree with the motion in that we do the public's business, we should do it in the public, and just make sure that we have documentation of it so that we can reference things, because even tonight, Kelly referenced something 22 years ago. You know, that's a quarter of a century ago, but we need that documentation of things, so.
Thank you. I'm just going to passively agree with everything everybody said. Anything else, have anything to add?
I'll add it in my report at the end, but I'll, I'll speak to this just a little bit in the airport report.
Good. If there's no more discussion, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. Motion carries. That is it for new business. Moving on to staff reports. Tony? Chief?[1654.89] Other chief? All right. Max, anything? Connie? Mr. Habegorst?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have a re-grand opening on Sunday, July 13th, at 4:00 PM at Lum Park. We just wanted to celebrate all of the new construction. Project is all complete, and we just wanna celebrate that, so we're inviting everyone to attend.
What was the date?
Uh, July 13th.
July 13th at 4:00 PM?
4:00 PM.
All right, thank you. James Kramick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. I just wanted to update City Council. The staff have completed the preliminary draft of the development agreement in conjunction working with the city attorney, uh, for the St. Francis Project. St. Francis is currently reviewing the language, and, uh, the agreement will most likely be considered at the next city council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Lang? Chris Schubert? Jesse Dean? I know we have the interim airport director...
That'd be me.
Anything? Neil? Is it Neil? All right. I'll meet you afterwards. Administrator Broyles, nothing to add? All right. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, holy Hannah. Buckle up, folks. I know it's getting late. Just a couple of items. Uh, we, here in the city of Brainerd, love to celebrate the 4th of July, and we just did so. And, uh, I, as the mayor, had the privilege of being, uh, at multiple events, uh, that included the city staff, and I just wanna thank them individually. Arts in the Park went fantastic, so park staff, some street staff as well. Thank you, uh, for all your hard work there. I will say, I have been in Gregory Park a lot the last five years, and it is, it is the nicest it has been in half a decade. I can clearly say that. It, it is beautiful right now, and I...
Boulders.
The boulders.
I wanna thank Kevin Jaeger specifically, specifically, for the boulders and the, uh, the managing of traffic through there. If we could still get our garbage staff to maybe not drive the same path all, all the time, that would be a step. But, it looks beautiful, and I want you to please share that. 4th of July, uh, police, fire, streets, county staff, and the school district staff as well. Uh, fantastic job as always. A big shout-out to our police and fire. Um, we had to shoot the fireworks off 10 or 15 minutes early this year, and it was the right decision, and that's a hard decision. I fight decisions like that, cause I'm a firm believer on, we said 10:15, we go 10:15 sharp, but, uh, we gotta keep people safe, and, uh, that was a tough decision to make, and it was the right decision. And then, once everyone cleared, there was, there was a police officer doing their final sweep, and as we're coming back around, downpour, torrential downpour, but everybody was able to get out of there and home safe, and it was a fantastic show. So, thank you to everyone involved in that as well. And then, a request, if I may. So, uh, as a person that spends a lot of time preparing for the 4th of July, I take a mandatory two-week vacation, uh, after the 4th of July. But, in the last handful of years, I've taken on a project. The last couple have been at Mill Stadium, and where we did some sandblasting, or blasting a paint, and then repainting, and fixing the fences and whatnot. I would like to request from the city, I have a little bit of extra time on my hands. I'm not a guy that likes to sit around and do nothing. There is a fence on College Drive that, I don't know if you guys know of it, but it is, uh, green poles and then wire in between it. The poles could use a little work with some paint, and I would like to request of the city the, um, the ability to go paint those poles.
In the median?
In the median.
You have, you have to wear a helmet.
And a vest. I wear a helmet every day of my life anyways. Have you seen the, I, you gotta protect...
Lot of hair.
Gotta protect this head and also this hair. But, uh, no cost to the city other than just, um, maybe a cone or something. Uh, but I got the rest of the equipment, and we can, we can work on the paint color and whatnot. It should be the paint color we have for everything. So, if you guys are okay with that, in the next couple of weeks, I'd like to just set out, maybe take two days, and paint those.
I'm in favor of it.
Great.
Second.
Unless that's stepping on shot.
As long as it's not a big to-do. I just don't want it to be a big to-do. Okay, I got orange ve, listen, I got the most high-vis shirts you've ever seen in your life.
We know.
So, you ain't gotta worry about that. You're gonna see me.
Heaven's are over.
It's gonna be hard, it's gonna be hard to miss me.
They're so bright, I can see them.
Do we, do you need a motion for that?
I don't think so. Just, I just don't wanna go do it without...
John, don't arrest him as a vandal. He's trying to fix the pole.
I'm painting the poles.
Blue?
Are they gonna be blue?
I got, actually, I think I might have a serious question for our turn. Is there a liability issue here? Always with the mayor.
Is there, is there a liability issue if, uh, a member of the city council paints poles? Is that what your question is?
Painting poles in the median and between, College Drive, um, that you would otherwise see a, uh, street department or somebody doing, perhaps?
Well, we could have him sign a waiver of liability, I suppose.
I, I will sign a waiver for everything I do. I probably shouldn't walk up the stairs here.
I, yeah, I saw you walk up the hill on the 4th of July in the parade. Probably should've signed a waiver before that one, too.
Almost died.
Yep.
Almost died. Uh, and, and just lastly, super fast, I wanna thank Tony for running Mike's meeting every time, so just appreciate that greatly.
I wanna thank Tony for doing that, too. Thanks, Tony. All right. Thank God that's over. Um, Mr. Bevins?
I just want to, uh, let you know that the library construction is underway, and I think the windows are all sealed, and they're, the library board met recently, and they're all excited about that, and excited to get the air conditioning working and the ventilation system working, and I believe all the work outside is done on the handicapped accessibility on the north side of the building, so things are happening. Uh, also, at the ARB, if I didn't mention, the designation to make that a regional park is, uh, done and approved. And what this means is that, I mean, it means a lot of things, but what it really means is access to state money. So, that's a great thing. Uh, the bike park will have a soft opening on the 12th of July. That's five days from now, uh, from noon to 5:00. That includes a fundraiser for the bike park. So, lots of exciting things happening in the city of Brainerd.
Thank you.
Brainerd and Baxter. But that...
Yeah.
That sounds like a fun weekend. 12th, go over and check out the new bike track.
Yep.
13th, go over to Lum Park and jump in.
Not Lum Park, the ARB.
No, that, the next day. The next day is a grand opening.
Okay.
Grand reopening. Mr. Chesak?
Uh, absolutely. Big news. Um, we got new staff here, Adam Forstrom. Everybody know him? He's in the transit department. Quote it in our paper. This move is a big one. Anybody know what I'm talking about? We're launching an app for our transit, and it's gonna help people schedule their bus on their smartphone. You're gonna be able to see where that bus is when you're waiting. You're gonna be able to do it after hours. Big, big stuff here. This is a new, uh, uh, it'll help dispatchers. You can call in and dispatch a bus tonight for a bus tomorrow. Um, it'll do, uh, what do you call, the optimization, where instead of the dispatcher having to say, uh, re-schedule a bus to pick up in between a ride, it will automatically do it. This is a, this is huge compared to what we were doing with Route Match, which is antiquated, and I'm really excited about this. I won't be able to use it myself, but I can still call in, and I think you all should try this sometime. Just, uh, see how it works on your smartphones. This is, this is a big thing. It really is, and I'm glad, I'm glad our dispatch did a story on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Uh, let's go to Mr. Jaeger.
Yeah, just real quickly, where I know we're getting on here, um, with the airport report. I, uh, just so happened that the two narratives kinda crossed paths, uh, tonight. Uh, as this was being asked for, uh, by you guys, the works were already kind of in motion out there at the airport, and I will also fully acknowledge that conversations between the airport, commission, liaison, direct, what, in the past have been cryptic at best, and that's something that, uh, I personally would like to take on as an initiative to, to fix and repair moving forward. I'll be perfectly honest, the last two months of my life have been highly taken over by finding that amazing human being right there, sitting in our gallery, and I'm hoping that the next two months, him, Mr. Plansor and myself, uh, in fact, I know the next two months, we will be dedicating a huge amount of time to better understanding the mechanics of the airport, what it will take to run it, and quite frankly, helping the city council, as well as the county, understand the dynamics of what that ownership means, what the obligations are, and how we can all work together towards a well-spoken, open, um, path for the future, for all of us. So, uh, I, I fully agree with you that that has been not healthy in the past, and, um, it's going to take the city council, as well as the county, uh, to sit down with open ears and understand this, and my hope is, is that between myself, Mr. Plansor, and, and some other members of our commission, we can, uh, paint a much clearer picture, picture moving forward. So, uh, expect that, uh, to come, be coming back to you. We, July is our, uh, month. We have at least three meetings scheduled already for budget talks at the airport, so we can be prepared to present it to the full commission at the first meeting in August. That will allow us to bring it back to you guys, uh, throughout the month of August. So, uh, and that's happening on the county side as well. So, uh, we're in the works right now, and I, I would just wanna call out a couple people that have been instrumental in helping this, the process so far and in the future. That's Mr. Plansor, Jessica, members of the commission, Mr. Barrows, uh, and, uh, Mr. Palmer. So, uh, we got a lot of work to do out there, and, uh, we'll be getting back to you guys with, with great information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Keep it up. Very good. Uh, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. I'm always relieved to hear you be confident about something. It's easy to be confident. Uh, 4th of July, and Arts in the Park were fantastic this year. Thank you, Brainerd Community Action. They did a fantastic job. The day after the 4th, we had movies in the park. Thank you to Community Action. Thank you to the, uh, to the Parks Board and the Parks Department. We watched Goonies, which is 1985 PG. And I will say, like, one of the first scenes of the movie, a certain part of the male anatomy gets knocked off of a statue, and the mayor's...
Eight-year-old.
Older, his eight-year-old son didn't stop laughing about it for an hour and a half.
Said it was, I asked them what their favorite part. The small ones was when they found the treasure. The other one said, when the kid said it's his mom's favorite part.
Unbelievable. Thank you, 80s.
Movie length also.
Fantastic time. I look forward to the next movie in the park. It was a great venue for it and a fun time for the whole family.
Thank you. I just wanna add in that, thank you, a big thank you to staff, all these big, big events that we have for the 4th of July. Um, I know police and fire are heavily involved, the streets crews are involved, the parks crews are involved, uh, and, and this guy right here, we give him a hard time, but he, he does a lot of work, and it's a very stressful, stressful time for, uh, pretty much just the one month of the year that he has to work.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Very good job. Everything turned out great. You did it all in the nick of time, right before the storm came. Uh, hopefully, we can repeat again next year. Um, with that, uh, we are going into a closed session here, so looking for a motion to get into... To adjourn to the closed Labor Negotiations Strategy Session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D .03 subdivision 1B, to prepare for nego, negotiations with the Brainerd Public Utilities' Managers and Supervisors...
So moved, Stunek.
Association Union. Motion Johnson, second Chesak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign. All right. Adjourned.